Call please.
Hello.
I don't think they're on.
Mr. Hano? Mr. Gomes?
Present.
Mr. Bolland here. Mr. Carlin?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mrs. Gaines? Here. Mrs. Sylvia?
Here.
Okay, we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have a moment of silence. Please keep the following individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and prayers. Martha Tutulat-Antin-law to Elena Lavalley, special educator at Pell School. Roger Simone, uncle to Julia Downey, PE teacher at Thompson Middle School. And Claire Crudel, aunt to Lisa Butterbaugh, school nurse at Thompson Middle School. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the following subcommittee appointments that presented. School Building Subcommittee, Hank Niskin, Elena Earn, Jim Dring, Brian Rochelle, Cindy Shay, and Ned Conley. And to the Wellness Subcommittee, Anna Hedendorf.
Mr. Chair, I move the appointments be approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Nash, anybody signed up for public comment?
We do not have anyone signed up tonight.
Okay, the next order is Student Council Update, and we have Asher McGreen here to give her a monthly update.
Thank you. So for events we have going on, we have the Wet Out Dance that is Friday for a junior fundraiser. We also have the Go Dance that is April 28th for a senior fundraiser. And a freshman fundraiser is tomorrow at Chili's, so you can go there and have food and half the proceeds will go to the freshman class. For sports, we have the Unified Basketball Team tomorrow during school for track and field. The girls went for their first meet today, and the boys, it was a co-ed meet at La Salle. For baseball, they are 2-0 and they had a game today, so hopefully they did good. And the lacrosse boys also had a game today, and the girls' lacrosse team won their game 16-4 yesterday. And Rotsey won first place at an Invitational, and the juniors won the attendance challenge, so they got to duct tape Mr. John Hano to the wall.
How did that go?
It was really fun. That's all.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Our next order of business will be the recognition of the Skills USA Rhode Island Award winners at the competition that was held recently in Providence. Mrs. Gaines, I think we'll be moving over to present those awards as I call out the names. Please come up, get your certificate from Mrs. Gaines. We had a very good showing up there, and we had some students that did very well at the competition and represented our school very well and came away with some nice awards. So, first one we'll have is a gold medal in web design to Austin Diario and Emma Dagnall. The next one was a gold medal winner in the Technical Computing Applications Division, and that went to Elizabeth Taylor. I'll say, as Eliza's coming up to get her award, that the gold medal winners will advance or have advanced to the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. That will be taking place late May, May?
End of June.
End of June, okay. The next award is a silver in Technical Computing Applications to Stella Gasha. Next one is silver in extemporous, extemporaneous speaking, and that was a silver to Angelina Leavitt. And next we have a bronze in web design to William Fury and Leslie Ortiz. Next would be a bronze in Technical Computing Applications to Nathan Murphy. Next up is a bronze in Restaurant Service to Jacob Fidrissi.
I think Chef wanted to get a picture of that.
And lastly, a bronze in Commercial Baking to Ashley Ramey. Make sure you wait for the picture now.
Okay, Chef's taking a picture.
Also at that competition in Providence, we had our own Monica Ord was named the Skills USA Rhode Island Teacher of the Year. I know we haven't a certificate, but I don't think Monica's...
I have a question on... So, there'll be how many attending the... Will that be three students that'll be attending?
I believe it's three students and an advisor, I think, that are going to Kentucky.
Yeah, my... This is last officer's pay, I'm the skilled advisor. We have an officer, Bella Pine, who'll be joining the three students, who'll be sending four students this year, correct?
Good, great.
Thank you.
And how are we doing on fundraising for that?
Uh, working on it. We'll do something that will be... I'm a problem solver, so I'll find a solution.
We're all working together. Mr. Young's working with Ms. Blasberg. We'll have the funds.
We'll have the funds.
It's not on the docket, but we did get word that our robotics team had won the regionals.
That's true.
Would you... Do you know anything about who's on the team, or... I suppose it'll be announced soon, but...
We will be announcing it at our next meeting, but we just learned yesterday or last night that Mr. Dickinson and his team did win over the past weekend, so they will be going to... I think they're going to... Are they going to Louisville? No, they're going to... It's in Massachusetts this year, so they don't need plane fare. But we did find that out, and I guess while we're doing these congratulations, we have the Chef of the Year is sitting out there, Mr. Cobley, Chef Cobley from previous years. I'm just noting you're here. And I also, a couple of things. It's National Principal Week, so I want to congratulate and share with Mr. Vance, Mr. Campion, Ms. Westman, and all our leaders as far as at the middle school, we have Ms. Sullivan helping out, and at Pell, we have Ms. McKeon, and now we have another doctor, Dr. Ronnie Lee Mooney. So, Dr. Mooney, congratulations to you as well.
If I could add something? May I? Mr. Chairman, before our next school committee meeting, there will be a fundraiser for the robotics teams, varsity and junior varsity, to support their efforts. While they don't have to fly anywhere this year, they still have registration and room and board costs. So there will be a fundraiser on Sunday, May 6th, from 4:00 to 7:00. A wonderful meatball and spaghetti dinner provided by Sardella's Restaurant, and all the proceeds will go to the kids getting to the finals, May 6th. Tickets can be gotten at the school department from Marsen, or you can contact anybody at the schools, and we'll make sure you get them.
Thank you for that PSA.
Okay, next item on the...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry. First of all, congratulations to all the youngsters, the students who received their awards tonight for Skills USA, and also, of course, congratulations to the robotics team. Congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Ord for her leadership of the AOIT team in particular and Skills USA for many, many years. Chef Calhoun, thank you very much for the same, and thank you to Scott Dickinson for his leadership as the coach of the robotics team for many years now. My colleague, Ms. Sylvia, mentioned the fundraising just a little bit ago, but I'd like to note, Mr. Chairman, that at the appropriate time tonight, I will be offering a motion to pay for these youngsters from within our budget to attend the Skills USA program, to attend the national program, the national event, if you will. While I have tremendous respect for the fundraising efforts that robotics, Skills USA, and everyone else does for the various school events that they're involved in, we have a $40 million budget, and I think we can afford to find $3,500 to send these youngsters to national competitions, especially as we encourage them to get involved with these type of events, and especially as they come home with these awards. I will find a way later in the agenda to make my motion, and I hope that my colleagues support me. I don't think we should have to put these youngsters and their families up against the wall with regard to deadlines, et cetera, and having to sweat it out fundraising-wise. We can afford this $3,500, again, in the context of a $40 million budget. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is 4.2, Resolution Supporting School Construction Referendum in Articles 5 and 9 of the Proposed Rhode Island State Act Budget. This is a resolution from the Fix Our Schools Coalition requesting support of the school committees throughout the state for the attached resolution in support of the school construction plan proposed by the governor.
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution be adopted.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item, moving into the action items, will be Action Item 5.1. It's a request for approval of bid number 18-049, school and cemetery mowing. There's a motion before us to approve or take action on the mowing of the school grounds. And Mr. Harrop is here, if we have any questions of him on this request.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Gaines?
I move the recommendation.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harrop, is this money coming from within the department or the city of Newport's budget?
So, the 4.4 Mowing Act, the schools, part of the repair and maintenance budget that falls under the schools, $43,875 is broken out on the bid form specifically for the three schools over three years, so that's three years of mowing at the three schools. The city properties are different lighting terms in the bid, and those will be presented to City Council in the appropriate arms and nets, City Council will be... And just for information purposes, if you're interested, the city will be paying $90,000 over three years for their mowing.
Thank you. What's included in our budget, in the school committee budget with requests or with regard to this type of request? How much money do we have set aside for items like school grounds mowing?
So, this budget is just being developed right now for the next years coming up, which is when this will take effect. I can tell you that this amount is just a small percentage higher than the old amount, but it does give the added benefit of we're specifically having the lawns and the grass cut here at Pell on weekends to avoid the conflicts with students. So, the pricing is slightly higher than last year, but again, it's being built into the new budget.
Little bit off subject, but do you know what we have in the school department budget in Fiscal 18 for items like school mowing and things of that nature?
I do not commit those to memory, and I do not have a copy of the budget with me.
Okay. Here's the reason why I ask. I assume 5.2, the request for approval of district-wide lighting upgrades, is something that the city will be paying for in entirety?
So, not necessarily, and when we get to that item, I can discuss it.
Okay. Well, further discussion on my part. In order to spend money or in order to do anything officially at a school committee meeting, you have to have an action item which is on the agenda. We have two action items as it relates to spending money. And as I mentioned earlier, and I think I've found the appropriate place, I would like to ensure that the students who have been involved with Skills USA have the appropriate funding to go to the national competition. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'll ask Mr. Colley if he's here, but I believe we have plenty of money left over in the Fiscal 18 budget in this line item, and I would like to amend this motion in order to provide for the funds necessary for these youngsters to attend the national competition without having to fundraise on their own. I'd like to ask Mr. Colley what the exact amount of money we have dedicated to these line items are, please.
Well, first of all, Mr. Colley, if you could provide that, I don't know if you have that information for what the line item would have for mowing of lawn. If you have it, please.
No, he does not have it broken out at this time.
Well, just looking over here, Groundskeeping Services, line item 54204.
Let me... Mr. Chairman, let me instead ask Mr. Galvin. Mr. Galvin, as our attorney, how can we ensure tonight that... What type of motion would we need to make and approve to ensure that the youngsters who are competing at Skills USA at the national level will have the appropriate funding from the school committee to attend without fundraising?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out a way to accommodate you because it's an awfully nice thing to achieve if you're able to. It's certainly not on the action items agenda, and the reports basically just provide information as opposed to taking steps in that regard. I'm not sure it's actually available to you to be able to achieve it. I think expressing the point of view, you know, kind of expressing the feelings of some of the members will convey the message you're trying to achieve, but I'm not so sure it's appropriate or available to you under the current agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Mr. Chairman, question for the superintendent, please. When do we... When does the Skills USA team need the money to attend without fundraising? When do they have to commit money-wise to be able to attend for everything involved, whether it's air flight, whether it's hotels, registration fees, it doesn't matter? When do they need to have the money to commit to being at that competition without fundraising? And specifically, will that deadline come before the next school committee meeting?
Mr. Carlin, I would... I don't think we can have a discussion of this right now. Our discussion is on Item 5.1.
We can have the discussion so long as nobody objects to it. If you object to it, just let me know.
Well, I support what you're trying to do. I believe I understand what you're trying to do. However, Mr. Galvin has just informed you, I don't know that there's a mechanism for you to add that to the agenda for this evening.
Then I'd like the question answered. Are they required to submit the money before the next school committee meeting?
I don't see...
That's part of the discussion on 5.1.
I don't see...
If I'm out of line, just let me know.
I will get to that in a moment, but I don't see how your discussion pertains to Item 5.1, so...
Well, then, rule me out of order.
I'm asking you to... We'll find a spot for you, but I don't believe it belongs in 5.1.
If it doesn't belong on 5.1 or 5.2...
I'll find you out of order at this point. Mr. Chair?
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Mr. Chair, I move the previous question, so we can vote on the cemetery. There's a motion, I believe, and second?
Well, I believe we'll first have Mr. Galvin, we'll have to first deal with the motion that Mr. Carlin is out of order at this time.
Well, he's appealing your ruling, so that needs a second, and then you proceed from there. Excuse me?
I'll second the chairman's ruling.
Can we have an explanation, Mr. Galvin or Mr. Gomes, Mr. Chairman, as to what my appeal is about and what the various...
Mr. Gomes made the ruling, and Mr. Carlin was out of order. Mr. Carlin has appealed that. That needs a second. Are you seconding that appeal? So that needs a second to proceed to have the committee vote on it.
I'll repeat my motion. I appeal the ruling of the chair. I think we should continue discussing this. I don't see anywhere else on the item, on the agenda tonight where we can discuss this. I'm doing the best I can to get this money to them.
I know. What I would suggest, Mr. Chair, in the spirit of what is being attempted here, there was conversations earlier, be it under awards or otherwise about fundraising. It's in the spirit of that discussion, I think you could just get that answer provided, perhaps, because there was discussion or comments made about fundraising, and I think it's in that context that this question was asked. It's just the timeframe as to when they need an answer, correct?
That's correct, and I will take back my appeal of the ruling of the chair if I can get a guarantee from the administration and/or from the chair that these youngsters will get the money. I don't care how we do it. I saw a couple of opportunities tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Galvin's interpretation. In fact, I agree. I don't think there's really many other ways we can get the money to them. What I'm concerned about is by the time we meet next as a school committee, it will be too late, and these youngsters will have to struggle with their families to try to find the money.
I don't know if there's an ability to give guarantees. I think there's an ability to get the answer as to when they need the information. That's the context that I was trying to achieve for you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Superintendent to me.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. April 25th, we need to have the airline tickets purchased. It'll be about approximately $5,200, and the administration working, including Mr. Young. With others, we will make certain that they attend the event.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for. I appreciate that certainty on record. I take back my appeal of the ruling of the chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Gaines?
Never mind.
Mrs. Sylvia?
At the risk of opening another door, I just want to say that I think it's great when students fundraise for some goal that they want to attend. This is my third year involved with the robotics. The stress isn't as great this year because there's no flight, but the enthusiasm that the kids have when there's a fundraiser, I think it's great for them. Anyway, that's all.
I will take that.
Okay. Mrs. Gaines?
I think the fundraising is great for kids, it's great for the community, and we happen to have benefactors in this community who want to do things for our kids. If the fundraising falls short, there's no doubt that the money would be available for the kids to get to where they need to be. But the... I've gone to every fundraiser that we've had at Sardella's, and the people in the community who come in to support our kids, to meet with them, to congratulate them, the atmosphere is priceless, and I think it would be a loss, not just in funds, but in rapport in the community to cancel this.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Flowers?
When we had gotten the initial communication via email about the need to fund our young people's trip to the Nationals, I had replied that... I'm not too sure if I replied all, I can't remember, to be very honest, but I had replied that I would... I don't think I used the word "challenge," but I would encourage my colleagues here on the school committee to contribute out of our own resources, at least something towards sending them to the Nationals. So, I put that challenge out now. The fundraising effort on the part of our young people, the kids really know how to go about doing that, and sometimes the adults can learn from it, too. So I would assume that at this juncture, each of us here will certainly do what we can to support funding this, support the fundraiser, and put our own money where our mouths are, too.
That's great. Now, I would ask if there's any more discussion on motion, on the action item 5.1 regarding the school and cemetery mowing. Is motion made and seconded? No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 5.2, Approval for District-Wide Lighting Upgrades. Again, Mr. Harrop, if you'd like to brief us on that, please.
Okay, so the district-wide lighting upgrades, what you're looking at right now is not going to cause an obligation on the part of the school committee. In order to move the project forward and take advantage of the rebates that are being offered, they have to be officially accepted in writing. Now, working with Jerry Drummond at National Grid, he urged us to go out to our own vendor for the install. If we work through another firm such as Rise Engineering to get it to be a turnkey project, we'll basically be paying a premium on top of the labor rate to install. I spoke to Frank Toner. Unfortunately, this project is far too large for his electrical company, and he is not going to commit to hiring extra people, so I'm developing an RFP to go out through the MPA to multiple electrical vendors that are capable of doing this project, as other school districts have used the same approach. Again, tonight, we're just looking at taking advantage of the rebates that are being offered. If we get the official acceptance, then we can get the rebates. It does not lock us in. If you decide that the numbers come in too high when the labor rates come in, then we can say that the project's not going to be completed, but at least in this case, if we do approve this, the rebates will be available at the time that numbers come in for the work if the projects are accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Gaines?
I move the recommendation.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that we want to keep Rogers High School and all our schools warm and safe. and all our schools warm and safe and dry and up the code. We're proposing here tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars in upgrades to the lighting at Rogers High School among the three schools. We're also simultaneously, simultaneously, although we haven't officially asked for it yet, we're heading down the road pretty fast to asking for a brand-new Rogers High School building. What's wrong with the lights now at Rogers? And, and what do you, what do you say with regard to putting in tens of thousands of dollars of new lighting at Rogers, like we did with $3.5 million worth of work on Rogers' roof in order to get rid of the building in just a year or so?
So, the warm and dry and appropriate lighting, things that were pointed out that we still need to provide while the school is occupied. The fact that we're going after a new school does not necessarily correlate with saying that we're going to forget about taking care of Rogers, because for the time that students are still there, we still need to maintain that property. The estimated payback period for this project is approximately two and a half years. It's extremely unrealistic to expect that we would be moving into a new high school any sooner than six to seven years from now. So if you're realizing an estimated savings of almost $27,000 per year in utilities for six to seven years, which far outweighs the cost of this project, then after those two and a half years, once you meet that payback period, you're saving money on the operational end, which will be critical to moving forward and moving into other school buildings and a new administration building. So again, this is not looked at as something we're saying, "Just do it because we want to." It results in savings long-term, and there will be savings beyond the payback, because I fully expect to be in Rogers for another six to seven years.
Okay, so I appreciate that answer. So, so folks, understand, how much are we spending on this project upfront, and what is the savings each year that you expect?
So, the upfront cannot be determined until we get bids in from a vendor to put it in. The confusing thing that I had to get clarification on is the rebates, if you pay for the project upfront, will cover 100% of the cost of the materials. So the numbers that were provided by National Grid assume that you were going to install. That skews the numbers a little bit. So until we get those numbers, we don't really know, and in fact, the payback may actually be less than is shown on National Grid's spreadsheets.
Okay.
So again, once I have numbers, they obviously would be presented to the school committee with the assessments of what the expected savings are in energy and how that would correlate into the payback period.
So, if you did the best you could to determine what it might cost, and I know you don't have bids yet from vendors, but if you did the best you could to determine what it might cost, when are we going to see a break-even point? How many years is it going to take for us to see a break-even point? That's question number one. Question number two is what I asked a few minutes ago. What's wrong with the lighting at Rogers now?
The lighting at Rogers right now doesn't necessarily provide sufficient lighting for the classrooms. I've heard that from numerous teachers and administrators. And the other point of it is, it's just simply burning more energy than we need to burn. A lot of this lighting project is geared towards reducing the energy consumption.
So again, using the best analysis you can or estimation you can, not holding you to anything, when are we going to get the money back for this? How many years-
I believe it's going to be less than the two and a half that's projected by National Grid. I would think two, slightly less than two.
In two years, what we spend or authorize or ask the council to spend tonight, we'll get it back.
Well, you're not authorizing to spend tonight, because I don't have the actual-
Well, we're asking the council to ultimately approve of, since it's coming from, from their budget, in, in about two, two and a half years, we're going to break even on this.
You'll break even, then everything that you save after that will be savings in the operational account.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrop.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Sylvia.
I just wanted to point out that this approval is in concept, right?
Correct.
And the final approval will come after all the numbers are calculated.
That is correct.
So, I'd like to move the question.
Okay. There's a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item 5.3. It's approval, a second reading for the policy number 7310, snow removal. This has been brought before, is at a previous meeting and passed on the first reading. This is the second reading required to make it, to put into policy.
Mr. Chair, I move, I move passage.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's 5 to 1.
Who's opposed?
Mr. Collin. Next item on the agenda, 5.4, is consideration to change school start times. I believe Superintendent Jermaine has some information on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vance and Mr. Young have been working on this together. After looking at some survey data, the recommendation is to move the start time for Rogers High School to 7:30. This would have an impact on the other schools in the district. And at this point in time, through conversations with the bus company, the bus company is saying they could move the Thompson Middle School to 8 o'clock and Pell to 8:30. It's, everything goes around, comes around. It's going back to the original starts before the Rogers High School time was moved up, but that is the recommendation from Mr. Vance. Mr. Vance apologizes he had a family situation that he could not attend, and Mr. Young is here to share any more information and answer any questions.
So, yes, Mr. Vance gave the presentation last month. We were here for that, and it was part of the school committee. I would ask my colleagues to consider that we pull this from the agenda for this evening with the consideration that your advice is to change the school start times back to 7:30 for Rogers, 8 o'clock for Thompson, 8:30 for Pell, so that we can properly advertise, so people are allowed to have input. I think there wasn't much clarity this evening on the fact that it would be for all three schools and not just Rogers. So, in, in the, in giving people consideration to support this or give their input to it, I think possibly holding it to next month would be appropriate.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Sylvia.
Would it be like a notice to parents, all the parents, just saying it's been proposed or it's being considered?
I would consider the act, and that would be on next month's agenda, would clearly spell out that the three school start times are going to be changed to 7:30, 8:00, and 8:30.
And we'll send that notice out, so they're all aware.
We could send a notice out, but it'll also be clearly stated on the agenda for next month.
Okay.
Jim? I think it's imperative, thank you, it's imperative that as early as possible, this information be disseminated and made very clear to everyone in many different ways, you know, via electronic media, newspaper, letters, hard copies, everything. Because I think one of the difficulties that we all had to endure was that it was so close to the beginning of the school year when changes were made. All for the right reasons, but sometimes we had, I think, as I said back then, unintended consequences. So I certainly would support letting everyone involved know about these particular changes that are being proposed.
Thank you. Mrs. Gaines.
I have no objection to voting on this at the next meeting, but since Mr. Young is here and has prepared a presentation, I'd like to hear.
He doesn't have a presentation.
No? He's not presenting?
No, I'm just-
You had your computer open. You tricked me.
No, sorry about that. I was just following the agenda on my computer. That's all. Yeah.
Sorry about that.
So, I would entertain a motion.
For next, next week's, next month's agenda?
We would need, a motion would be in order to remove this item from the agenda for this evening and consider it next month.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item 5.5 is a request for approval to schedule school committee training. I believe Mr. Hanos requested this at last month's meeting. I, I'm assuming it would be to schedule training. I don't have much information on what the act item would be.
Mr. Chair, move if we continue it to next month.
Our motion's been made to continue item 5.5 to next month. Motion's been seconded. Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is discussion items. Item 6.1 is a smile program, science and math investigative learning experience program. I believe Superintendent Jermaine is, has some information for us on this.
I believe our guest speaker was unable to make tonight, so we will reach out to her, and we'll see if she can make it at a future meeting.
Okay, so we'll continue to-
We'll continue this one. Well, we'll continue it. I wouldn't say to next month.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue that for now. It's a discussion item, so no action is needed. The next item under discussion would be 6.2, and it's a presentation of student assistance services program. I believe Superintendent Jermaine has some information for us on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we do have, as you can see in front of you, we do have people here to present, and I'm looking, I know Lauren, and there's, I'm going to, Lauren, I'm going to have you go to the, you want to go to DeSantis? Do you want to go to the mic and introduce your group? Lauren likes to pretend she's not in charge, but she's in charge.
Shh, don't tell anybody. Hi, I'm Lauren DeSantis. I am the grant manager for the Newport Prevention Coalition, and we are here to present to you tonight about the school department funding, the student assistance position. We, as the coalition, have funded it for the last two years, and the grant that has been paying for that unfortunately is expiring. So the funding is not available, and we are looking to the school committee to hopefully be able to take up that cost. The student assistance position is absolutely vital for the two schools that Ms. Ruth is in. My colleague and I both have gone to Rogers and Thompson, and especially the staff at those schools are saying that there's a lot of problems with marijuana, there's a lot of problems with alcohol, and the first line of defense in dealing with those items is your student assistance counselor. So this position really cannot go away. You absolutely need it. I don't really know what else to say about it. I think that Sarah is going to expound upon that, but I have some letters of support from some staff at Rogers.
Two, please do.
I think, can everybody take-
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Are you going to have to use the mic and please introduce yourself?
Yes, I will.
So they, they can get out in TV land. They can hear you.
I'm Sarah Dinklage. I'm the executive director of Rhode Island Student Assistance Services, which is a division of Coastline EAP, and I thank you very much for inviting me to come here. I'm going to be very brief. I'm told, was told I have about five minutes. We've been, the organization that's been providing student assistance programs, which is a substance, statewide substance use prevention, early intervention program in Rhode Island public schools since 1987. We are currently in 24 school districts and 47 secondary schools, including Newport and Rogers, the schools being Rogers and Thompson. We've been, as I said, providing this program for over 30 years. We, we took on the program at Newport about three years ago, actually in 2015, when it went out to bid as a statewide assignment. Since, but Lisa Ruth, the student assistance counselor, has been in the district for, how many? 19 years. Formerly, it was under the auspices of Child and Family Services of Newport. So, so why are we here? Why do we need, why, why do we need substance use prevention services in public schools? What does that have to do with public schools? Well, if you take a look at the classroom, approximately five students in a classroom of 24 report that they've used substance use, some form, some substance in the past month. Okay? That's Rhode Island statistics. Five students in a classroom of 24. Alcohol and drug-related problems also impact students when they're present in the family, with siblings, family members. We know with the opioid epidemic, all too many students are dealing with family members, siblings, parents, other family members who are struggling with addiction. In Rhode Island, one in five children under the age of 18 lives in a home where alcohol or other drug dependence is a fact of daily life. Okay? So from, view from the classroom looks a little bit like this, and you, you would have received this PowerPoint earlier. I do have hard copies if you want to see some of them, because I'm going to skip some of the slides that have statistics, so you can look at it later. But it, it basically shows, the, the X's are the numbers of students in a typical classroom impacted by substance use because they're using it themselves. They've begun, they've initiated it, they may be using it heavily. The, the circles are the students who are actually impacted, who actually have substance use disorder, which is a diagnosable condition defined by chronic and severe substance use. Okay? And that does appear in students as young as 15, 16, sometimes even younger. And then the, the, the square is the number of students who are actually impacted by family. So in any given classroom, this is an issue for, for many of the students in the class. Now, Lauren was just up here, and based on, their coalition did a comprehensive needs assessment, which I believe came out in 2017. It's based, the data's a little bit old, but based on 2013 Rhode Island community profiles, Newport High, this is back in 2013, Newport High School students ranked number one in lifetime marijuana use and number four in current alcohol use and prescription drug use. Okay? So I don't know if it's improved since then. We are looking at, we're doing surveys to evaluate whether that has moved, but that's important. I can tell you, though, this problem impacts, I, I'm, we're in 47 schools, 24 districts, from Westerly to Wunsakit, Barrington, Bristol Warren, Foster Gloucester, Warwick. This problem impacts all, all, all districts. There is not a district, there's not a school that I go in that does not say we're dealing not only with the drug and alcohol use problem, but the mental health needs of youth, and those are integral, those are very much tied together. So, again, I'm going to skip, I'm going to skip some of the surveys. I'm going to say, ask you, you know, I hear this all the time, "Kids will be kids. We did this when we were little. Why does this, why does this really matter? What, what's, what's the big deal?" Well, the big deal is, and what we know now that we didn't know when I was in high school, is that substance use impacts the developing brain quite dramatically. They've done brain scans to show, and how, how alcohol and other drug use impacts brain. So if you're looking, and we hear a lot about needing to improve test scores and academic performance, and if you, you know, one of the factors in order to do that is to make sure your students are drug-free, because alcohol and other drug use doesn't have to be addiction. Just alcohol use and other drug use results is correlated with lower grades, it's correlated with lower test scores, it's correlated with abs, increased absenteeism and tardiness, failing to complete assignments, you're less likely to graduate. You don't need research studies, though, to, to know that. I mean, it makes sense. When students are coming to school, whether, if they're coming to school high, that's certainly impacting their day in school, but if they're, even if they're using chronically after school or a few times a week after school and on the weekend, their grade, their academic performance and their attendance is negatively impacted. So that's why this matters to schools. Aside from the fact that you all care about kids, it matters because it impacts, alcohol and drug use and personal problems of students impact your mission as educators, so it has to be addressed. So what is, what have, what have we been doing? What have you been doing? What has Newport been doing? Newport Schools, again, for many years, has been partnering, well, I'll, I'll just talk about our organization. So since 2015, Newport Schools has been partnering with our organization, Rhode Island Student Assistance Services, and the department, the State Department of Behavioral Health Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals, BHDDH, to implement Project Success, which is an evidence-based, nationally-recognized substance use prevention early intervention program, which is specifically designed to delay initiation and reduce alcohol and other drug use. How do we do that? We put specially-trained, master's degree-level counselors, like Lisa Ruth, who you have here. Lisa, stand up, just in case people don't know you, in the schools to, where students have easy access. It's really a adolescent, if you think of them as the consumer, it's a consumer-friendly program. You're putting a specially-trained, master's-level clinician in the school where students have easy access. I worked in outpatient settings before this, where students- where students had to come once a week, and you'd wait, and you'd have no-shows, and kids wouldn't show up. And this is, this is having, providing onsite services by a trained professional. And she's, while she's integr, totally integral to the school department, and school, to the life of the school, attends school events, reaches out to kids in classrooms and lunchrooms, and after-school activities, she's an employee of a private agency. So, that's also often reassuring for parents to know this is a private organization that works in partnership with the school. Services are confidential unless there's a risk to a student. And it's, 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 again, students come. So, just to give a brief, I'm not just gonna go through all this, but basically what, what Lisa Ruth and her colleagues do is they, they're onsite to provide brief assessment, individual and group counseling for students who are using, for students who are at risk for using, because they're, they're, because they're having problems in school. She, she attends and orchestrates school-wide prevention activities, and she and our, our organization are available to consult to school administrators. We just recently met with Mr. Vance at the high school and his staff, his administrative staff around mandatory referral policy. So, students who are caught, a big problem in schools across the board now is the vaping, the Jules and the e-cigarettes, which students can hide in their backpacks. So, it's a problem in every single school. Administrators will tell you that's one of the number-one things they're dealing with. Students sneak them in. So, we talked about, you know, how, how to address that, recommended policy for that. And so, that's an example of the, of the resources that our organization can bring in, in addition to the services that Lisa provides onsite. So, just briefly, to give you a nutshell, the program was originally just at Thompson's. We split the program, so she's three days at Rogers. So, last year was just beginning. She saw 24 students, one mandatory. This year, just, this was since, just as of February, so it's already increased. She's seen 81 students, including 12 mandatory, mandatory referrals. And these are students, this does not count the students she sees in classrooms. These are the students she sees in, in providing brief intervention. At Thompson, she has seen 101 students last year, and, and then as of February, 86. So, that will be, probably exceed that number this year. In addition, at Thompson Middle School in the seventh grade, Lisa provides an eight-session curriculum called the Prevention Education Series, which provides information on alcohol and other drugs, how to cope with stress, how to deal with day-to-day problems without using drugs. And she goes into the classrooms and she reaches the entire seventh grade at Thompson. And that's a, a component of, of Project Success. So, that's a prevention proactive program designed to reach kids before they start using. In closing, as, as Lauren mentioned, this, this program is funded very much a partnership. We are funded by the Department of BHDDH to provide services to these schools. Districts, in typically, a district contributes a match, and that would be $24,000 for the, the cost of a full-time, master's-degree, experienced student assistance counselor. As Lauren said, the district has not been paying that. The Coalition has been covering that cost through various grants. So, we are hoping when those, when those grant funding, that grant funding ends, that the Newport School District will, like all the other districts we serve, be able to contribute the match to keep this program in place. When you look at the cost, you, you know the personnel costs of, of master's experienced people, 24,000 is a good deal. So, for all that you get. So, I just thank you for, for hearing me, and any questions?
I have a question. When you said you saw 101 students, do you see them once? Or is that 101 multiple times, or like?
Yes.
So, but that was 101 different students?
Yes.
Okay, and then you might have seen them multiple times?
Right. And typically, an assessment, a student gets referred, an assessment might be one to three sessions. It's voluntary, too. I mean, unless it's a mandatory, it's voluntary. So, one to three sessions, and then a determination is made, does the student need some ongoing counseling? Should they be put in a group? Or should they be referred for additional treatment? Or all the above? She can still work with students who are also involved with outside providers. So, usually involves multiple sessions. Anything else?
Thank you so very much, all three of you. Thank you. Is there any danger that this grant will run out before the end of the school year?
No.
Okay. So, for fiscal '19, next school year, you're looking for?
Yes.
It's, we, again, as I said earlier, we have a $40 million budget, probably more for next fiscal year. I implore my colleagues, as we're developing the budget, I mean, $24,000 for such a very, very important initiative. We ran the risk two fiscal years ago of not getting this funding, and the Coalition stepped up. Thank you. If we can't find $24,000 in the midst of an opioid crisis, second in the nation, I believe Rhode Island is, in a $40 million budget, then shame on us. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for having me, and us. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I too implore all of my colleagues to support this program. This is not a program that we can afford to lose. There are too many kids at risk not to have this kind of service available to them. And we have to do whatever we have to do to make sure that this program is funded.
Dr. Blowers?
Thank you. I've had the privilege of being the school committee representative. I thought that's all I was going to be, but they voted me on the board. And it's, I've learned a tremendous amount in just these, you know, the few months that I've been going to the, the monthly meetings. And to the point where it's even been, including a student representative, who just happens to be a young lady that I've mentored since she was in second grade. And just talking with her, just in conversation with her, you find that what you shared with us, all of this, this data, all of the experiences that these young people are going through, it's pretty common. And, I mean, I, you know, the reports coming for us, we hear all of this, and we read all of this data. But when she shared with me what she sees, not only, you know, her own immediate experience, she's been, she's doing well, thank you, but what she sees with some of your colleagues in school. And she said, you know, you would be truly, truly very surprised. A lot of people, sometimes we try, we don't even want to think that so many of our young kids are involved in the substance abuse or being exposed to it. And I think, once you put, put faces on people that we, that are working with, sharing their expertise, and letting the community know that this is indeed a problem that we all are really being judged with solving. Like I say, we've had some reports given to us, but this has been quite a valuable learning experience for me. And I certainly hope that people who view this meeting at another time and who read some of the follow-up will say, yes, we have to support the funding and hope that we can, you know, keep improving, keep increasing our outreach to our kids and saying, hey, listen, let's get them on that straight and narrow, because they're, they're our future. And a lot of these kids have a lot of burdens to bear, and we want to help them to relieve that particular burden. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I just wanna say, I don't think that we can afford to lose this program.
The services, I think they're vital. With all we're doing for the schools, programs, we need this for our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is six point three, is a process for teachers when they retire. I believe the administration has put together a pamphlet that will be distributed to teachers upon their retirement to answer questions related to post-retirement benefits. Doctor, Superintendent Jermaine, I don't know if you'd like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, Ms. Markey has put together something for our retirees, so that when they do go, and for that happy day when they decide to retire, we're putting together something for them, so it's very clear about what their defined contributions are for 403B, their different coverages that they have, and this will be updated on a regular basis. It is under legal review right now with Mr. Galvin. And when we have it completed, we will share the final product with you.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to that. And six point four is an update on the kindergarten and pre-K grants. I believe Dr. Bean is going to provide us with some information on this.
Good evening, everyone. Several months ago, the Department of Ed invited several districts to apply for the preschool development grant. So, my team of grant writers, Allyn Grantham, Kathy McKeon, Tracy Westman, and myself, we worked on two different grants. There were three different grant opportunities, and we worked on the alignment within birth to five continuum. And we also applied for the best practices in curriculum. And we received word about a month ago that we did receive both grants. The first grant, the pre-K to K transition summit series, is a grant that is written with some of our partners in our Read to Three campaign, MLK, Baby Steps, Head Start, our, our own preschool, early childhood coordinator, and Kathy McKeon will be part of a pre-K summit series. And our grant involved a few goals. The, the main goal is to create regular connections and shared resources between our community-based early learning partners. That's something that we've really been trying to work on over the past few years. The other piece of this grant will allow us to expand our transition activities and also align our assessments, so that we have common assessments exiting pre-K, coming into our kindergarten teachers. And then the third piece of that grant is to also expand our family and community engagement activities. So, that's the birth to pre-K grant. Any questions on that grant?
The kindergarten or just the pre-K one?
Just, I, I just fin, just did the pre-K. I'll talk about the K grant. No questions? Okay. All right. The second grant that we received was the best practices in curriculum, and that was for a kindergarten curriculum known as the Boston Curriculum. RIDE had invited us a few years back to be part of the first cohort, and I think the timing was just not right for us. We had just moved Appel, and so, we're, we're excited to get this opportunity to apply for the grant again. All nine of the kindergarten teachers signed off on wanting to be part of this. So, when you had eight kindergarten teachers agreeing to do this in one district, and because we're one school, it also comes with a kindergarten coach. So, part of the grant is affording us a kindergarten coach for the year to help implement the kindergarten curriculum. We've already posted that, and the closing for that posting was yesterday, so we're reviewing the applications for that posting. So, the person hired will also be part of the Boston Curriculum training that the teachers are going to the end of May.
Is there, is there a pool of coaches that you can choose from?
So...
Said there's an RFP out for the coach.
We, because we had eight teachers agree to do this, we don't have to use their coaching staff from the Boston Curriculum. So, this would allow us to have an onsite coach here for a one-year-only position to help implement and coach the kindergarten teachers through the process. And it can be one of, it, it can be one of our own people.
Okay.
Okay? So, it's a, it's a great opportunity, and also, this grant is paying for that position. For that one-year-only position.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What kind of, you know, training will this person get, this coach? 'Cause I would imagine this is, this, it's another way to approach teaching kindergarten, isn't it? Pretty much as Boston?
Right. The Boston Curriculum is a, it's a play-based, centered-based curriculum, where a lot of the, the center-based activities are, are like inquiry-based. But the language development, that was like the big draw with our kindergarten teachers. So, five of our kindergarten teachers went. I connected with several other districts that are going to be going into their third year of implementation. And we went, Tracy Westman and the teachers went to Cranston and visited several classrooms up there and had time to debrief and, you know, hear all the, you know, what they wouldn't do. You know, they, they got a lot of great advice from those kindergarten teachers to, to help them. They'll continue to be a support to us. But anyways, the K coach will be vested in the curriculum professional development. And then also, the K coach will be involved in ongoing training with, with RIDE and the other coaches. So, that's another piece of that position. So, they'll, they'll have ongoing training. They'll also have additional meetings with the other K coaches throughout the year, and also meetings up at the Department of Ed.
I just wanna say, it's, it's really ironic that the pendulum swings once again, 'cause we went to all academics in the, in the kindergarten, and now it's swinging back over to, you know, like, play is important, and what they get out of play. And if you read what it says about how, you know, young children learn, that the academics are not as important as the skills they learn, about how to get along, language, about, you know, completing a task, starting a task, you know, all those things that we really, you know, moved away from. So, I think it's really exciting that, you know, the pendulum has swung back and we're gonna start. It's just a shame that we have all those kitchens left in those schools. You know, those little play kitchens that were left in, you know, all the elementary schools. I don't know what's still left with that, but there was some great stuff back there, back then, that we didn't move over.
Okay.
You know?
Well, I know when we were purchasing the furniture...
You did get some?
We got updated kitchens.
Okay, you did.
So... Any other questions on the K curriculum?
Well, I just think when you see, like you say, play-based, I suppose, but they are kindergartens, and it can be. I was not a kindergarten teacher. Keep this in mind. But it seems that that is a form of teaching. It's a form of the youngster's learning. Like you say, the language development, math, all of those like particular things. So, it's, it's, I remember last year, we were saying, talking about strategic plan, about trying to return that sense of joy in the classroom. And, and maybe we all should have fun a little bit more sometimes. And, and that's just when you want the, the kiddies at that level to really enjoy. And yet, as, as you have all the, the science behind it to encourage this, it's not really new, I suppose, but it's a new approach to, to teaching, so.
I, I will say that when the, because not all the kindergarten teachers went, when they came back, the teachers that did go presented a PowerPoint to the other kindergarten teachers during their Common Planning. And the level of sophistication and the conversations that the kindergarten students were having peer-to-peer were really impressive. So, while we say it's play-based, center-based, there, there is a lot of rigor in it, and, and choice, and, and, and projects, and they have authentic audiences that come in to share their learning. So, there's a lot of pieces to it, and a lot of, and a lot of curriculum that the teachers are gonna have to pour through this summer to be prepared for September.
And I think as long as we've had all day K, and it's been quite a while, obviously, unless you're there in the buildings, or you're working with the kiddies, or you have children in those programs, I think, unfortunately, there are a lot of people who think the kindergarten is still just, it's just there. It's that the academics are not part of it. It's that the academics are not part of it. And hopefully getting this word out will let people know exactly how valuable the kindergarten and the pre-kindergarten years are. So thank you for sharing all that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Bean sounds very, very interesting. I appreciate it. Will you have this on the agenda before September for the school committee approval? I suppose I should ask Mr. Galvin. Mr. Galvin, is any curriculum changes by state law required to, they're at the discretion, if you will, of the school committees, correct?
Yeah, you know, I'd have to take a look at it. This is a pilot program, from what I understand. So I'd have to look at it, Mr. Carlin.
I'd appreciate if you put it before the committee for approval. There's not much we actually get involved in, but this is one of the most important things we get involved in, curriculum. It sounds very, very interesting, but I look forward to perhaps a clarification about this. I believe it's something that the school committee should be advising on, if not voting on.
All right. It'll be on the agenda next month.
Thank you. We'll look into it and move forward.
Next item on the agenda is item seven, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I hope the consent calendar be approved second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number nine, our monthly correspondence. And there are no correspondence, so we'll move on to item nine, which is reports from superintendent and staff. And the first two, 9.1 and 9.2, will be Dr. Colley on expenditure and revenue reports, as well along with the restricted grant report. Dr. Carlin.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see from the information provided to you, we're still tracking the budget to June 30th. I've just met today with all the administrators, encouraging them to encumber whatever funds they deem necessary from now to the end of the year to better track where we are with the budget to June 30th. In terms of the expenditures, I was able to go through all the lines for salaries. And even though some lines may be in deficit, overall, we do have the funding available. Just got put into either the wrong lines or teachers went out on leave, so we're paying a sub instead of paying out of the salary line. So in terms of salaries, where we're supposed to be for this month, I'll be looking at the $52,000 lines, which are the benefits, retirement and all of that. So we will have basically all those lines figured out by next month, and you will have it in your report. At this point, we do have tuitions that I know there was a question on the tuitions in terms of, you know, how much money do we have in terms of students that are either out of district or are attending other schools, whether it be because they are homeless or they are in a program, for example, at a tech program in another district that we do not carry. So those were looked at, and, you know, if you have any questions, I can talk to you about those. At this point, if there's any questions on the expenditures?
Mr. Carlin. Thank you, Dr. Colley. That was my question that I had asked some time ago. I asked a few questions, and I appreciate you getting back to me. The tuition line item in the budget, line item number 5550, I'm sorry, line item 55600 has us budgeting $1.9 million for tuitions with about a $1.8 million, oh, with an adjustment coming down to about $1.8 million in committed spending or in, about $1.8 million as seen in the FY '18 budget. We have no students in charter schools at this point, correct?
No, we do not, not this year.
So that $1.8 million does not include any charter student tuition?
No.
Okay. We've paid $1.82 million year-to-date for tuitions. You mentioned a moment or two ago-
If I may, that is not the-
I'm sorry. We have spent $950,000-
Yes.
-year-to-date on tuitions.
We spent $870,000, and we have-
Oh, $870,000, I see, I see. I'm sorry. $870,000 is the actual expenditure, and $950,000 is what we have remaining in that line item.
We've encumbered it.
Do we have anything, is that, that is encumbered, that $950,000? So you expect to spend the $950,000 before the end of the fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to spend by the end of the fiscal year $1.82 million on tuitions?
Yes.
Where are we spending the money? How can we be spending, if we have no charter school obligations? You, let me back up for a moment. You mentioned a minute or two ago about homeless students that we are responsible for paying for. And that's certainly a, not only a worthwhile expenditure, but an obligation on our part. Do we not educate those students, homeless students, in our own district? Why are we sending homeless students out of district?
It depends where they're homeless from. If they're homeless in, if they came to us from another district and they wish to return to that district, we must send them back to that district.
So the city of Newport and the city of Newport's taxpayers are paying to send these homeless students to an out-of-district placement, even though they are not Newport students? Is that what I understand?
If they're homeless here, if they're here because they're homeless and they need to go somewhere where they came from, yes, we do pay.
What are we doing if the student came from Providence, Central Falls, Wunsucket, Pawtucket, West Warwick? What are we, as a Newport School District, doing to send the bill to those districts rather than giving the bill to the Newport taxpayers?
Most of the bill is transportation, and the transportation basically, in some cases, gets split between the two systems, but we still pay a portion of it. It's in the law.
That is part of the state law? We are required, if a student shows up or a family shows up, and it's a terrible situation to be homeless, I would wish it on nobody. But if a student and his or her family shows up in Newport and they lived in Central Falls 10 minutes ago, we're responsible for half of the busing cost and we're responsible for paying upfront for their out-of-district tuition in the hopes of getting reimbursed. Is that right?
It's mostly the tuition, I mean, the transportation, not so much the tuition.
Okay, so how much are we spending for homeless students who go to out-of-district schools from a busing perspective?
So when we do the calculations for that line, you're talking about students who are in special needs or in out-of-district placements. We combine into that line both the tuition and the transportation. We do have some students as well who go to the Met School. We pay for the tuition and their transportation. We have at least one student, if I remember correctly, at one of the other local districts who actually have a different vocational program than what we have. So I know at least then one student, I believe it's to Portsmouth.
And here's where it gets extremely complicated, because there may be some homeless students who currently reside in Newport, even though they're homeless, who might go to the Met School, for example. And we are responsible for that tuition and busing.
We transport them. So say it's the other way around. Say it's one of our students who goes to, say, Providence, but they were, used to be at the Met School, but they're considered to be our homeless student. We do pay for them, because they're still our student.
Fairly sizable line item at $1.8 million, and there are no charter school tuitions that we're paying for. There's one Met School tuition that we're paying for, and-
There's more than one student going to the Met School, but the majority of that line is students in out-of-district placement because of their IEPs.
How much approximately are we paying for out-of-district placement for students who have IEPs of that $1.8 million?
Hold on, my computer went to sleep.
So I'm going to talk while Mr. Dr. Colley's computer is coming back up. Just for the audience, when a student becomes homeless, if someone is in Newport and they become homeless and they wind up living in Middletown, Portsmouth, wherever, wherever they move to, the district in which they move to shares the cost of, shares the cost of transportation if the child would like to remain in the school at the time of when his or her family became homeless. And the thinking behind this, and this is a federal law, is that's one of the stabilities in the child's life. So a child was living in Newport, the family becomes homeless. To Mr. Carlin's point, they may have to go to Central Falls, Providence, somewhere else. They do have the ability to say, and the family has the ability to say, "We'd like to keep the child in Newport with his or her friends." So what happens is the school districts, because as Dr. Colley was sharing with everyone, it happened, unfortunately, it happens to too many children, too many families all over our state. So what we do at school districts, we share the cost of the transportation. For children that live in our district and that have an IEP, and we've tried services, and you always try for all children to keep children in neighborhood schools. If we do not have the services here to meet their needs, we then have to find alternative placements for them. And that's what we call an out-of-district placement. And those students, when they go to a specialized school, there's a tuition to pay for those specialized services. And in Newport, as in most other districts in public schools, that's usually your big-ticket item as far as an out-of-district tuition or placement, that grand total. The other thing that Dr. Colley and Mr. Carlin have been talking about has been charter school students. If we have students that are in charter schools, we are required, if a child wants to go to a charter school, the district is required to pay a tuition if they have that. I believe we have one student in Newport that attends a charter school. We also have, or maybe we have a few more. And then we have the Met School. In the Met School, we do have more than a handful or about a handful of students. And I believe it's a couple of hundred thousand dollars we pay to the Met School, at the Paul Crowley Met School, for tuition for those students. Because that is considered, and when the Met School, there was a special legislation, and Mr. Carlin, you're probably going to know more about this than me because of the legislation in the background that you have, that school was designated a charter school, state charter school. But we still, even though it's a state charter school, we still have to pay tuitions to it. So that was-
Just a state school.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And Mrs. Gaines, who's on the Board of Education, corrected me. For a state school, we have to pay tuitions. That is correct. And now, Dr. Colley?
So I guess I'm a little bit confused here. You, Superintendent Germain, say we have one or perhaps more charter school students. Dr. Colley told us a few moments ago we had zero-
I verified, there used to be one last year. There is none this year.
None? None for school year 2017-18?
Yes, there is none.
That would be reflected in this fiscal year budget?
Other than the Met students, which are sort of a vocational program.
Appreciate, again, your background answers and your answers tonight. I think it's very important. It's a $1.86 million, $1.82 million line item. And here we are struggling for $24,000 in next fiscal year to pay for substance abuse counseling, et cetera. So I don't, I don't think any taxpayer would object to the appropriate payments for Newport students who have IEPs who cannot be handled in the district that need to be placed out of district at schools like Bradley or with the Brothers in South County or something of that nature, or Harmony Hill School. I don't think anyone, well, I mean, it depends which political philosophy is, but the state law is the state law. We pay as required for charter students, whether you agree or disagree. But we don't have any charter students. What I am concerned about is the breakdown of this $1.8 million and what we are paying, you don't have to answer exactly, but approximately what we're paying for students who do not fit into the charter, out-of-district IEP, or other internal school department expenditures. What are we paying as a school district for students who really are not ours? They're, and this, I'm not holding anyone accountable for this. It is what it is. It seems to me an awful shame that the Newport School District has to pay potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars to send students back to Central Falls, Wunsucket, Pawtucket, wherever, as the superintendent said, they may feel socially and otherwise comfortable. What the hell are we doing here? This is our, this is money being taken away from Newport school students, Newport District students, to pay for someone else's responsibility. With all that being said, are other districts that we're aware of doing this for us, how many of our students have gone and said, "Now I live in Central Falls. Now I live in Pawtucket. Now I live in Providence, and I lived in Newport 10 minutes ago." And that's an awful lot to digest, but here are my concerns.
So let me go one at a time.
Thank you.
The special ed is about $1.5 million. The Met, as the superintendent mentions, about $200,000. So that's the bulk of it. Some of it is going to a couple of the other vocational programs. But in terms of transporting students back and forth who are homeless, it works in both directions. So we pay a portion, the other schools pay a portion when they come this way. We don't have the numbers here right now, so how many are out, how many are in, and it changes almost daily. So it's a, it's a very volatile scenario trying to predict it, because you can gain three today and lose two tomorrow. They find a home, they come back, or they, you know, somebody else leaves. It's a very transitory population that we have around that issue. And even in terms of special education, we do have some movement of them as well. You can lose a child tomorrow, and then for the rest of the year, you don't have to pay that tuition. All of a sudden, you are to the good $10,000 or more. Or you may inherit a student who just moved in, happens to have that kind of an IEP or needs, and then now you're going to have to pay. So even that line moves up and down quite a bit over the course of the year, and that's why we sometimes make some adjustments as we go through the year.
Thank you very much. It's, well, that was very well explained. You know, I'll just offer a commentary that I wonder what the Barrington School Department or District or what the East Greenwich School District or the North Kingston School District has to deal with with regard to this type of line item. We are a very welcoming community. We have, as we read about or in person, we heard about a few days ago, we have 15% of our available housing, which is classified as low income. We have 61% of our students who are either receiving free or reduced lunches. I do not, as best I can tell, I do not see this as a statewide fair sharing system. And it is not our problem, or it is not something that we can, as a school committee or a city council, address. Something that has to be addressed at the legislature. Barrington, North Kingston, East Greenwich, and other wealthier communities are certainly not seeing these type of line items. And we are spending tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on expenses that should be picked up by the state or that should be shared by other districts. Just because you don't pay for busing- Just because you don't pay for busing to send a child from the Barrington School Department back to the Central Falls School Department because it's far too expensive to live in Barrington doesn't mean that the Barrington taxpayers shouldn't be doing their fair share that the Newport taxpayers are. And that's my commentary, and I appreciate your answers. It clears a lot of this up for me. Thank you, Dr. Colley.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the expenditures?
No, you can move on, please.
So in terms of the revenue, we're still tracking the, the income. There are a couple of good news, if you will. We are tracking now additional rental income. So the amount of money that we're expecting that may fall short in terms of the Medicaid and the tuition projections that we had at the beginning of the year is beginning to come down in terms of the total impact to the budget in terms of the revenue side. We're still working really hard at trying to get as much of the revenue from Medicaid. I know Ms. Grantham has been very diligent in pushing her staff to make sure we get all the reimbursements that we're entitled to. We are working with the company that we have managing this process to try to recover some monies from even this summer and perhaps into next year, or last year, I'm sorry. So I'm hoping that maybe we'll be a little bit more surprised. I don't have the third quarter reimbursement yet, so I don't know what that's gonna be, and we won't get the last bit of money until the summer, even though we'll book it as a receivable. So that's basically where we still are with the, with the revenue. We do expect a little bit more rental income as the year goes on. We're trying to track down whether all the rental that we're expecting has been received. We have a spreadsheet going to try to keep track of that, and then we'll project for the next school committee meeting, I'll have a projection at least on the known quantities for rentals that we expect to get and deposit into this account. Any questions on that? If not, moving on to the grants. As you can see, we do, just so you know, in terms of the federal grants and the grants that are considering in Fund 21, if you will, those grants, we expend them first, and then we request reimbursement from the state. So we just completed quarter three, we're about to put in our request for reimbursement, so you'll see those where we have the expenses, but we have not received the revenue, that's because we spend first and then request the reimbursement. Actually, some of the, the 23 grants is the same thing, so you will see that. We did, as I had indicated, we had a couple of grants that we were looking to make sure the revenues had been posted to the correct accounts as well as the expenses. We have a couple of them that we have been able to reconcile with the town. One's the P-Tech grant. We did do an internal audit, we took a look at what was there, and we found out we do have the $10,000, so that will be used to bolster the expenditures for NACTAC. And then going down the line, we still have a few that we're still looking at. We did have one where we found that the money for a staff member had been taken out of the grant that shouldn't have. We actually moved that back into our accounts, so that grant has been balanced. And in this go-around, I also included not just the city-funded capital projects, but I also included the food services account as well, so that people can see how we're doing there.
It's in here?
It's in there, at the very bottom. And in there, again, we had not asked for the reimbursement, which I just did this week because usually you wait till the end of the month, and then you go ahead and ask for the reimbursement from the state. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
I have one question.
This is a general question.
I've noticed that in board docs, things have changed from, it used to be public content and executive content, now we have administrative content. So are you familiar with that, maybe this is Ms. Nash? So now, for instance...
That has to be moved out once, once it's accepted by the committee, so that is the public.
So then it goes to...
It just goes out to public.
So people from the public aren't seeing administrative, they're only seeing...
Correct.
Okay, and then, and then it goes into executive after that. All right, just wanting to, something new, and so...
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Colley.
You're welcome.
We'll be moving on now to, to the next 9.34, 9.5, 9.6, 9.7 are all reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There really isn't anything remarkable to report out. We do this month under 9.7. I shared with you some of the presentations that the staff had. Mr. Jamie Lahane and his group came and, which was the request of the teachers to Newport Mental Health's, how to find, find the right words when you're speaking with students and to help support our students better. That presentation is there for you. Let's see, the other things we have, we have the homeless reports, the chronic early absenteeism. We continue to work on the initiatives. There have been some slight improvements in the schools. Strategic plan update, everything is on track, our, except for the ILP, and that is the plan for students, to help them look at different career job opportunities or their interests. And the state has kind of put a pause on that because they're going out and looking for more vendors on that one. And then under the partnerships and collaborations, you will see the presentations and all the other activities. We are now involved with our community partners. So if there aren't any questions, I'm just presenting the reports.
Mr. Colley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent Jermaine, if you look at the report, the, lack of a better phrase, the homeless report, to the questions I, regarding the questions I had asked Dr. Colley, our report indicates as of last month, or as of the end of March, we had 41 families who were homeless in the Newport School District, 72 students. 33, it says, are at Pell, 20 at Thompson, and 15 at Rogers, including two others, or not including, I should say, two other students at the JFK Annex, the preschool, and two others, one in Head Start and one at the Tides School. So 72, that's a very unfortunate number. Dr. Colley said we were budgeting for busing for homeless students.
Correct.
So this is not a complete report of the homeless students because it looks like we're assigning, or the students, if we have 72 students and a full 70 of them are at Rogers, Pell, or Thompson, where's the report on how many students were busing out to Central Falls, Providence, West Warwick, and other places that Dr. Colley said we're paying for?
All right, so that number, as Dr. Colley shared, fluctuates literally some, on a day-to-day basis. And right now presently, we have, Ms. Grantham has shared the information, we had the most recent bus update, and we have 12 students that were required right now that we're transporting. That means that those students aren't necessarily living in Newport, they may be living someplace else, and we're going to get them, or the district's sending them, and we're sharing, and then we may return them to where they were relocated, or that they have moved into our district, so they're, some of them are part of this 72, but they're not Newport students. And what ha- has happened, meaning Newport originally from Newport, and they're here, so we're transporting them back and forth.
All right, I'm, I'm very confused. You might have to explain this in a more detailed manner. We have a, we, we have a report in front of us.
Correct.
The Newport Public Schools homeless population. There are 70 students who are assigned to three schools.
We have 70, we have, as it shares, 41 families.
Yep.
72 students.
Right.
Are considered homeless.
Yes.
All right, and then you have the breakdown of where they are. That's what we...
33 at Pell, correct?
Yeah, correct.
20 at Thompson, correct?
Correct.
15 at Rogers.
Correct.
So that's 70 students.
Correct.
And there's, there's two others that I, as I mentioned earlier. So none of these students in this report are being transported at our cost to other districts.
That's not necessarily true. They may not be living in Newport, but they were deemed homeless.
Why are they enrolled at Pell, Thompson, or Rogers?
Because when they became homeless, their parents or the children, they felt the best place was that for them to continue at the school when they became homeless. So if they were living, they were living in Newport and they were at Pell School, somehow, some way, they became homeless. They may be living in Portsmouth, they could be living in Bristol Warren, they could be living anywhere else, and the family, for the continuity of the child, the one constant in their life is their friends at school or their teacher at school, they continue to come to Pell. So if they live in Bristol, Middletown, wherever, and we all do it because it happens in every district, we talk to each other and usually it falls under the realm of the Assistant Superintendent working in, hello? Working in, you have a seat, working in collaboration with usually the Director of Student Services or because she also deals with students, they work in collaboration, and we share the costs with the district. So we may call Portsmouth tomorrow and say, "We got a notification that this family has been moved, or just recently moved to Portsmouth. They found available housing in Portsmouth. They're homeless. So Portsmouth, they want to continue to come to Pell School. Will you help us out?" And what we do is we have conversations on the phone, and because we have NACTAC and we have other buses going back and forth, we find a place, usually if it's on existing transportation, and we'll figure out a way to get the child into Newport, or Portsmouth will help us with that, and then we take them back out to Portsmouth possibly at the end of the day. But we talk to each other because Portsmouth may wind up in the same scenario. They go homeless, they wind up, the family moves here, and then they say, "You know what? We want, we want the students to stay with their teachers and their friends, so we'd like them to continue to go to school in Portsmouth, Newport. They moved into, they're in your city. Will you help us out?" And there's an understanding between the districts that we help each other out and we share the cost of transportation.
That's, that's well explained, and it's the right policy, whether it's our policy or state policy, to have continuity for these youngsters. So I now better understand that of the 72 students that are on our books, so to speak, in Newport, some of them we may be transporting to other districts. So when we assign them, as we did here in this report, to Pell, Thompson, or Rogers, they're not necessarily physically there at our schools.
They're...
Correct?
They don't, they don't put their heads down.
Superintendent, may I just try to...
Sure.
Those students may be, those students are being transported to come to Pell, Thompson, or Rogers from another district perhaps.
I don't think that's what she said, though. No, I think she said that these are Newport students, Newport residents originally, who may have found housing in other school districts or in other towns, and we transport them to the other town.
We bring them back to...
Oh, I'm sorry, we bring them back the reverse, the reverse way. We bring them back to Newport.
Correct.
So I think that's what...
She did say.
Yeah.
She's asked, answered your question, we'll move on.
Well, wait a minute, now, so how many of them do we bus?
I'll deem you out of order. She's answered your question because you don't understand it or like the answer, we will move on. She's answered your question to the best of her ability.
It's not that I don't like the answer, Mr. Chairman, I think it's, it's a very sad state of things, but...
I'll rule you out of order this way.
So, Mr. Chairman, so you won't allow me to continue my, my questioning?
No, we will not.
Okay, that's typical of this school committee, but I appreciate it.
Yes, it is. Thank you. We'll move on to 10 is the meeting dates and agenda items for moving forward. We have three meetings. April 13th is a wellness subcommittee meeting at 10:00 AM, NACTAC Room 924, and the School Building Committee Subcommittee has recently started meeting. They'll have two meetings, April 17th and April 24th at 5:00 PM in the NACTAC Room 924.
Mr. Chair.
There is no, no need to move into executive session.
May I make one announcement?
Certainly.
The pre-k fair this year will be held on Saturday, April 28th, right here at Pell Schools. There'll be a lot of information about pre-k opportunities, there'll be games, face painting, raffles, and it's a great opportunity for parents with young children to come, Saturday, April 28th, 9 to 12.
Thank you. Forgot about that. I'll put it, Saturday, April 28th, we'll put it on the calendar. Thank you.
There are no, no need to go into executive session tonight, I believe, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
No rules.
Motion's made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you.